Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need to start the, this meeting is being recorded thing either sooner or later than the pledge of allegiance. It's very 1984 to get started and immediately says you're being recorded. So our agenda has us starting today with the Fenimore Woods Improvement Project, which I know we have a slide deck. So Tammy, take it away.
Jack, I'll, I'll get us going here and then I'm going to hand it off to Tammy and she's going to step through the slide deck. If, just really quick, I just wanted to tee up the project. And Tammy will go into a little bit more detail about most of this, but just to provide some perspective to the Board of Commissioners. You know, we're working on this project from the standpoint that Fenimore has always been a park that has attracted its users with its facilities. And so the facilities were the primary focus of the, the design going forward. You know, we'd look at the pavilion, the playground, at one point, the stable building, the pond, so on. And through Tammy's department, there are regular registrations for families and folks to come and use the park as an event center. So it hosts thousands of people per year in that regard. And then looking at it in, from an improvement standpoint, is that the park itself has not seen any significant improvement for the last, you know, around 20 years. The latest thing was the adding the playground in 2002. Prior to that, it had been sometime before, since any improvements were made. And so where we're at is that the, the facilities themselves are failing. As we know, the stable building in the condition it's in, it is, it's been roped off by community development and deemed to be, you know, uninhabitable and in need of teardown. At the same time, the pavilion, we understand the concrete's cracked, the, the wood pillars are aged and deteriorating and the roof needs replaced. And then as noted, the playground itself is almost 20 years old. And as we've seen in other Commissioner meetings more recently, those parts fail and when they fail, they're quite expensive to replace. And so that playground is, is in the window of the end of its useful life. That said, the design was approved by the Parks Board and at one point by, by the Board of Commissioners in 2019. And it was also discussed in Shade Tree and was aimed at addressing the facilities and revisioning the layout to address several key areas, those being accessibility, stormwater, some best practices in regards to where facilities are located within a park, say example, not next to a busy road. And then also trying to increase the, the use of the park for those that just, you know, want to go out and walk by having some additional pathways. Some things that are working against us with the plan is most significantly, the grading, that the site itself has got a significant slope. In order to accommodate the accessibility and stormwater, those slopes have to be disrupted. And, and that's where a lot of the tree impact comes from. We do also have quite a bit of trees or quite a few trees on the site that are currently in, have been deemed as unsafe by the arborist and need to be addressed more immediately. You know, aside from any kind of facility relocation discussions, it would be helpful to understand the board's position on moving forward with the, with those specific trees. And then also trying to consider our two, the two significant ordinances when it comes to land development, that being stormwater and the shade tree. With regard to stormwater, there's quite a bit of stormwater management on the site. In fact, right now there's zero runoff control. The plan calls for full runoff control. The shade tree ordinance has been discussed a couple of times in the Shade Tree Commission. While there is a significant tree removal, there is also a replanting plan. And I'm not sure if it was discussed before, but the use of, you know, a tree bank to plant the necessary compensatory trees in other areas of the township that cannot be fit back on this site. So that, that's just a real quick summary of, of where we were at in the design. Again, we were focused more on the, the site as a facility-based park, understanding that, you know, not everyone sees it that way. And, and we certainly respect that. And I'm sure we'll hear tonight from, from those folks, but just wanted to give the board a quick tee up there. And I'd like to hand it off to Tammy now, who will step through the deck.
Great. Thank you, Bill. And I'm going to ask Ian if he could tee up the presentation. He does have it on his end. So just so the board knows, there's going to be a little bit of jumping around tonight. So we have some, some members who here, who are here that have joined us, our consultants on the project, Gilmore and Associates. Tonight, Kevin Selger is here, Director of Landscape for Gilmore and TJ McIntyre, who's the Registered Landscape Architect for Gilmore. So they are on to step through some pieces of this as well. We also have John Hosbeck, who is our Registered Consulting Arborist. I know many of you have heard us reference John in the past, folks, for folks that are on and listening. So he is here tonight as well. All three of these individuals have been intimately involved in the project really since the start. And we'll definitely have a lot to contribute to the conversation as well, not only as we go along, but of course, at the end, we have some conversation. So just to kind of kick it off, the next slide, Ian, if you can jump, if you could jump to, that would be great. You know, so it's really important to kind of note that there's, there's really been a lot of time, effort and energy that has gone in to putting this project together over, over many years. So I know we, we talked a lot about the, the bond that was, that was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in 2015, which had come with obviously many, many years of deliberation and discussion. And just want to reference even before that, I know I've been here since 1999. And, you know, coming into the role as the Director in 2010 and, and sifting through a lot of previous discussions with the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as conversations that we had back in 2010 in presenting different park amenities, specifically replacement of the pavilion. And I know there was even discussion early on of replacement of the stable. You know, those, those are capital budget discussions that went on really for, for decades. And I just want to make sure, you know, we recognize that as part of the process. Along with the approval of the bond, of course, distinctly funded Fenimore Woods as a comprehensive park improvement project. So it was, it was more than just, you know, you know, a bond that improved parks and trails. This was, was, this was an allocated funding, allocated funding that went directly to Fenimore Woods. So I just, I want to make sure that we point that out because I know that there are a lot of new members on the Board of Commissioners who weren't there during that time. And when it, whenever the bond was approved, it was very distinct that Fenimore Woods was to be a comprehensive improvement project that entailed a revisioning, not much unlike Clement Chrome Park. So I know, you know, we all recall, you know, that park that's come to fruition. So it.
I apologize for interrupting you. Do you recall who was on the board at the time?
I think Rich Booker may have been the only board member as part of the existing commissioners who was on the board. If I recall correctly.
So that was, what year was that, 2015 to 18?
It was. So it was, it was 2015 ordinance. And I believe we approved it in December or late November. I know it was late in the year when, when we did. So obviously.
I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay. So obviously many of you were, were not on the board at that time, but I just wanted to make sure to kind of point that out. And not to mention the years and years of discussion, I know, you know, having even just in my tenure with the Parks and Recreation Board on, on Fenimore Woods as being, you know, really a top priority project to receive, to receive renovations. So we know that this has been a discussion that's gone on for a lot of time. So in light of that too, um, you know, just, when, when we look back at our department and, you know, discussions that we have, you know, anecdotally with the public, you know, when folks come into our offices or when they, when they call us, there's, there's a couple of topics that are, you know, always resurfacing. And, you know, one of them over the years, of course, has been the willows. You know, people call a lot about the willows. They want to rent the willows, use the willows, et cetera. And that's always been a big one. And really second to that has been Fenimore Woods. So, you know, we get a lot of usage over the years. I know, I know Bill mentioned, you know, we get thousands of users over the years. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the detail that to come. But when we talk with folks over the phone, when people come in, it's really a significant discussion. You know, people, they talk about things they'd like to see. They talk about, you know, things that they like, things that they don't like. And so we hear a lot. So I just want to make sure to make that point, you know, and especially the last 15 years as the park's condition has waned and as we've seen, you know, things kind of fall, you know, further into disrepair, like with the stable and with the pavilion, we've seen that feedback increase. So it definitely is a highly regarded facility and park in Radnor Township by many people. You know, recognizing that not all the users of the park too, like Bill pointed out, are people who sign up and, you know, use the park in a formal manner, but those who just visit the park because they enjoy it and they enjoy the splendor that, that it offers. So just moving on to the next slide to recap, high level, the budget allocation, it was $2 million. So this is what the board approved in 2015. Again, it was very specific and called out to Fenimore Woods. And then obviously we have some brands that we've been working on over the last few years, one in which that was just recently received, the Keystone Communities Project Grant, obviously taking the budget up there to, to $2,077,000. So just to give that little bit of background, next slide, Ian. So just a little bit about the process, you know, you know, we kind of have highlighted this already. There was a fact sheet that went out about a month and a half ago to provide some information, just to kind of trace the steps and, you know, capture the timeline and the meetings that had taken place. And we'll talk a little bit about how the plan really, you know, came to fruition. But before we get into that, I want to give just a little high level snapshot of the park. So if you could go to the next, the next slide, Ian. Um, you know, this is a park that was acquired by the township by condemnation in 1973. It actually had an existing house on, on the property as well as the stables. But the township had made the decision to, to raise the house, which is actually in the location where the, where the pavilion is today. It's approximately 11, 11 and a half acres. There's a large pond, as I'm sure everybody knows, on the site, about 2.2 acres. The Gulf Creek bisects the site. There's significant slopes and grade changes, which I'm sure a lot of folks are familiar with and Mr. White had pointed out. Also just, you know, a significant destination, not only for active recreation, which we know that, that's formal and strategic and, you know, rented through our department, but also passive recreation for a wide range of different interests. So, you know, we kind of, when we think about the park, we think of like, almost like this yin and yang sort of like nature. You know, you've got this top part of the park where you have a lot of, you know, very active recreation going on with the playground, the pavilion, and then the bottom part of the park, which is the pond, which is a lot more tranquil and includes a lot of nature. And, you know, folks have an opportunity to connect differently in that portion of the park versus the upper part of the park. And that's one of the things that makes it unique. There's two distinct points of ingress and egress with an upper parking lot and a lower parking lot, both configured in, in different ways. And then obviously it's neighbor to some residential homes across the street and behind the pond. And namely, of course, Cabrini and Eastern Universities. So what I was going to do now is just kind of step through some of the existing conditions and take a look at what some of the features look like today. So next slide. So this is the stable building, obviously the building that the township had retained. It sits there today. It has really fallen into disrepair. It used to be the bathroom space for the park. So if you rented the pavilion, you got a key from our department and you had an opportunity to use it as bathroom space. At one point, the township had configured the inside of it to include, you know, two distinct bathroom areas. And unfortunately, back in 2010, the building started to fall in significant disrepair. There's been a lot of water damage that has come in and has caused a lot of instability with the building. I know it's been reviewed a couple of times by our Community Development Department. It's structurally unsound and unfortunately it's just no, it was no longer a space, a safe space to enter. So we had to close it down. So what that left us to do is basically replace bathroom access with portable toilets, which, you know, is, you know, something that comes with their own, you know, challenges in terms of having those at the park site. Not to mention, you know, for volumes of usage, they're not necessarily ideal or sanitary. The other key thing to point out is part of the building too, is that it doesn't have an actual sanitary sewer system. It's actually a leach system in which the, basically the, there's really, there's no sewer. I believe it just goes into the ground. Next slide. So these are some of the additional pictures, one of the interior that shows some of the extensive water, water damage that has been done over the years. We know that the building systems have become compromised. We know that there's some hazardous environmental conditions. They haven't actually been, we haven't tested for them, but we know that there's a significant amount of mold that is growing in the space. Obviously it's not, it's not a safe space to, to be utilized and also really just is a, is an attractive nuisance to the site. You know, we've seen vehicles kind of parked in and around and behind it. You know, and it's just makes for an unsafe location within the park, you know, for folks to kind of hide out and snoop around. You know, if they're looking to do those kinds of things. Next slide. So transitioning just to the, the park pavilion, the park pavilion, we know was built sometime in the late 1980s. Not, not sure exactly when. We know it's about 30 years old, at least, you know, over 30 years old. There's a lot of deterioration that has happened. The, the roof structure is starting to fail pretty significantly. There's, it's encased in moss. The surfacing in area, it has, you know, an uneven surface that has been shifting. You know, obviously due to, you know, changes in the ground area and ground swale. So as you can see here, you know, we took a picture in the one area where, you know, we have, you know, about an inch difference there in the concrete in a very distinct area where rental, rental users, you know, would walk that creates a significant trip hazard. It's in proximity to a lot of the trees. We know that we get fallen limbs in and around that area that our Public Works Department is picking up on a regular basis that we know is significant. You know, we've had some issues with, with users and trees coming down and branches coming down, which we'll get to that in a little bit. So definitely the location that it sits within isn't necessarily ideal and does create a lot of safety just due to the amount of trees that are in there and aging trees that are in and around that area. There's no accessibility. There's no defined route from the parking lot. So like, as you can see in the picture on the left, you know, there's a couple of parking spots there where people kind of pull up to it, kind of serves as a little bit more of a barrier for people to not really kind of drive down. But we know people do kind of jump over the, the bumpers there and, and drive down. The same way, looking up from the lower lot, you can drive up and you can come up and through, but then you kind of have to turn around and go back down. So it's not really defined. There's not really defined access. It's not organized. And one of the key things to, you know, in proximity to this high usage facility within the park is that there's no bathroom close by. So if you have a, if you have a picnic and you've got, you know, children and as we see with the, with the pavilion or with the playground, you know, letting them, you know, run up to, you know, where the stable building is, where the bathrooms were located at one point in time was obviously a very unsafe feature and something that we heard about a lot. So proximity of these facilities is definitely something that, you know, has been a hot topic over the years in talking about Fenimore Woods. Next slide. So transitioning over to the playground, the playground, as you, as you know, sits along Paul Road. It is a very busy road. I realize that, you know, it's, it's the speed limit of 25. But we, we actually have videos that nearby resident has sent to us in, when we were in the process of putting the plan together that shows the vehicle, the vehicle traffic on this road, speeders on this road and really highlight some of the, the safety. Part of it too is the intersection, which we'll look at it in another, in another slide in a second, is the intersection at Paul Road where Walnut and Shimonie all converge. It's a little disorganized. But you could see right here, you know, that it's very close to the, to the roadway. It also is, it's a playground Bill had mentioned, you know, was one of the later improvements that were made in the park, which would have been the most recent in 2002. But what we are seeing is playgrounds that really weren't constructed too far behind 2002 are having a lot of breakdowns right now. We just had significant replacements occur over at Odericio. We have one coming to Cowan Park. You know, we're, we're seeing these systems start to break down, you know, once they get, you know, over the 20 plus age, age mark. And then of course, you know, obviously playgrounds have changed significantly too. So there's no inclusive play features. You know, those are things that, you know, in, in today's society is something that's very prevalent, you know, and trying to make sure that, that these locations are, are inclusive to all abilities. I know that there's a project going on right now where we're talking about putting communication boards at a lot of our different park playgrounds. So that's something that, you know, we're seeing, you know, in terms of usage, there's a high demand because of that prevalence. So a lot of these features are starting to be designed today, you know, to be able to have low level play space features, features where, you know, kids can kind of go off and do their own thing, have things like pods and sensory features that we, we know are very popular today, especially among, you know, children who have autism, which is, you know, something very prevalent in our society. The playground also doesn't meet ADA. So the picture on the right kind of shows you where you come in off the parking lot. You can see the slope that exists there. If you go to the next side slide, you can see the grade change that was put together by Gilmore and Associates that shows the cross section from the part of the playground there at the upper part near where the swing sets are located to the lower part, you have a six foot difference that occurs across the surfacing of the playground. So if we take a look at the playground and we, you know, we try and, you know, consider any type of accessibility, obviously this is going to come into play. And a lot of the reason for that drop is because it does go down to a swale. So there is a, there is a swale where you see the 346 mark that runs through the site. So something that, you know, we, we definitely have had to take into consideration, you know, when we came to the point of evaluating, you know, whether or not, you know, the playground stays in its existing site or is it something that, you know, we could move, move the playground to, you know, another location more centrally featured within the park. And just to note too, you know, with regards to public playgrounds and guidelines, there is a safety document that has been drafted that really, you know, that dictates a lot of these things and, and has strong recommendations on these guidelines in which, you know, we really make every effort to try and follow them. And one of them really refers to, you know, with, within the busy roadway, you know, evaluating hazards. You know, are there things like, you know, is there a lack of, you know, separation, you know, to where vehicular traffic could be close? And we know here, you know, we're, we're definitely within what that buffer would be, which I believe is about 30 feet. And we did see it at Clement Chrome Park. I believe it was in 2010 or 2011, we had a vehicle veer off the road and run into the playground and unfortunately no one was hurt. So, um, you know, it's not just, you know, it's not just hyperbole, you know, when we have these discussions about these different issues. So next slide. We'll talk here just a little bit about the, the parking. So the parking situation, picture on the left really just shows the entrance in at the lower parking lot. And where you, you turn in, if you were coming off of Shimonie and making a right into the park, it's, it's really a dog leg right turn. You can easily get rear ended. I know the times that I've gone over the park and I've made that right hand turn. If somebody's right behind you, it is a difficult convergence of where these roads meet. And then you obviously, you know, have a challenge, especially if you had any type of walkway access to the park to where, you know, all of these, these sort of dangerous pieces kind of meet. So that's something, you know, is definitely one of the aspects of the park that we've heard a lot of feedback over the years. I think some of the residents have even tried to take this to our safety committee or it has actually appeared on it, our staff traffic rather, so that they could be evaluated as potential moving of the entrance of the park. So I know that was something that came up probably about three or four years ago. There's mixed surfaces. There's a lot of potholes. It's eroding. There's a border that goes around the perimeter of the parking lot that has a steep drop off that you would have to step over to get down to where you, you know, head down to the lower portion of the parking lot and then head into where the pond is located. So there's definitely no accessibility. There's a steep slope there. And really just doesn't, you know, provide the ability for folks to navigate it well. Next slide. This is the upper parking lot. So just similar to the lower parking lot, you know, there's a, a lot of folks use the lot when we have busier usage days. Like for example, I actually took these pictures on Friday. We had a group there that was registered to have 50 participants, 50 users as part of their, their party at the pavilion. And the people were double parked in a lot of different locations, as you saw, I think on the previous slide. They were parked up along the roadway towards the bridge that, that leads up to the park, which isn't really, you know, it's never been tested to be, you know, overly stable for cars and traffic. So obviously another, another item that we would want to address, but there's no flow. The parking's very disorganized. There's undefined configurations and where to park. And again, you know, there's, there's really no accessibility up here at all. Folks have to traverse across the grass or they have to walk down through the parking lot asphalt and then down into the, the little stone road that leads down to the pavilion. So if you have a party there where you have someone who needs accessibility, it doesn't make it easy for them or for anybody who's accompanying them. And there's also a steep slope in the back part of this lot that you don't see, that kind of steps down. That goes down towards the pond. Not that you would go down that way, but it's another area where there's some configuration that could be regraded to kind of help, help that area and smooth those lines a bit. Next slide. So this just represents some of the, the stormwater management. There's, there's no existing stormwater management on the site. There's, there's runoff that is not captured from the existing park amenities or the surfaces to take it to the Gulf Creek. Back when these features were constructed, I don't think that ordinance even existed. So none of that occurred. And in future years, obviously there was no consideration given to that. So that's something that we, we definitely want to address. We have exposed root systems from the trees that have continued to worsen because of the erosion that has swept through the park. Obviously those create trip hazards. So something that, you know, we want to be mindful of and evaluated throughout the part of, throughout this process. The pond walking that path, we know has some deterioration as well that, that we want to address. And overall, you know, just the, it's increasing the grades over time and really, you know, it alters the features over, over time based on the lack of, of runoff control throughout the park. So next slide. Next slide after this. So here I just want to kick it over to John Hosbeck and have him talk a little bit about the existing tree condition. And then we'll, we'll jump back after that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Hosbeck, Township Arbrist. So I figured I'd give you a little bit of a high level update of my involvement leading up to tonight's meeting. So in 2018, I was commissioned by Public Works to perform an annual tree risk assessment like we do every couple of years at all the parks. It was just so happened that this park was on the list along with five others that year. At that time in 2018, we found 18 total hazards, which still occur today. You're looking at a few pictures right now. Then I was commissioned again by Tammy and Mr. Zankowski in 2019 to perform another analysis, which resulted in an additional eight trees, most of them being succumbed from just normal disease and tribulations that we found. Leading up to tonight's meeting in 2021, which I believe was in April, we found three additional trees that have died. These are not hazardous trees. There's just trees that have died over time. So that's leading up to tonight's meeting. That is a total of 29 total trees out of the 111 trees scheduled to be removed. From the original plans, and I believe TJ will touch on this tonight, there was 82 additional trees that we reviewed that were rated as good and fair condition. And there are 82 trees that need to be removed in order to perform the construction activities. And there are eighty-two trees that need to be removed in order to perform the construction activities. We performed a longevity rating of those eighty-two trees. And I'm going to talk slowly here, show people in the audience want to write this down. Um, and this longevity rating was based on species, size, condition, soil compaction. Biotic relation, abiotic relation, and just age relation. And we found from the eighty-two trees that need to be removed for the construction activity, we found that sixty percent of them. Had a longevity rating of twenty-five to thirty-five years before defects or tribulations were occur. So that's sixty percent. For twenty-five to thirty years from two thousand and twenty-one. We found twenty-five percent of that eighty-two trees, of those eighty-two trees had a longevity rating of eighteen to twenty years. We found that ten percent of them had a longevity rating of ten to fifteen years. And then we found five percent of those trees have a longevity rating from forty to sixty years. And as we can see in the slides tonight, um, in the left-hand picture, you'll see two dead pines. And to the right, we have a oak tree that has extensive stem decay. Next slide. Picture all the way to the right is a tall popper that remains today. Uh, the entire top of the tree is dead. And is about twenty-five feet from pavilion area that Tammy was speaking of that was rented this past Friday. Tree all the way to the left is another tall poplar with a declining canopy, large dead wood. Picture does, does not do it justice. Some of those branchings are about six inches in diameter. Next slide. Here we have uh, root decay, um, ganoderma, we found armaria. Numerous root decay diseases throughout the park within these twenty-nine trees. The purple markings on the trees, um, I put up for the residents, the concerned residents, so they can see the trees in question. Um, these are based on the twenty-nine trees out of the hundred and eleven. Next slide. Again, tall popper all the way to the left is a very large tree. I think it was a forty-two inch tall poplar. Very extensive um, internal decay, about one inch of downed wood. Um, and all these trees, um, were reviewed using the ISA tree risk assessment, um, at a level two rating. So we used resistant graphs, we used all kinds of diagnostic tools to determine the risk based on these twenty-nine trees. And obviously we can see uh, damage to the root flare, um, over time from mowing activities, mechanical issues. Um, and then this year's standard root decay. Next slide. Picture all the way to the left, obviously you can see, um, the trunk stem of this tree is totally decayed. Um, and has a immediate response for removal. Some more dead pines, um, and these are all part of the twenty-nine trees. We have a large oak tree at the bottom that has stem girdling, which is causing the bulging in the lower stem area of this tree. With uh, internal decay as well. Next slide. Here are some branches, um, some pictures that have been taken over time of various trees that have failed. Um, tree parts that have failed. Um, and these are mostly from the trees that are based on the twenty-nine. Um, that we have deemed risk associated.
So John, just if I could jump in here, uh, this was actually, uh, this was a, this was a, a usage at the pavilion that took place in. Uh, this, in like June of twenty eighteen. Uh, we had a group that was out there and, and had a bunch of children, uh, as part of a school. And this, this branch actually fell down during their party. Um, and they, they sent this to us. You could see the hole. That was put in the ground as a result of the tree that, the treetop that came down. Um.
And this is, this is one of the trees that's being condensed.
And so this was, um, this was a really scary situation, obviously. Um, a near miss. Um, as we know, um, you know, just, this is something that has happened throughout the township. We know that there was a death along the Radnor Trail. At one point in time. Um, if you go to the next slide, uh, we had a situation come up in twenty nineteen. Uh, where we had this giant tree come down on our brand new comfort station over at, um, Anki Park. Uh, fortunately, the, the two cars that were parked here, the, the Radnor Way and Little League representatives that were there at the site that day were not. Actually in the pavilion, uh, we're, we're not actually in the comfort station or they're near their cars. Um, but this obviously was a, a significant issue that recently happened. And then if you could go to the next slide. Um, you know, we've seen lots of scenarios and situations happen over the years. This is just an example. Uh, of what has happened residentially. And then if you go to the next slide. Obviously another one pretty significant, uh, that had been captured and documented by our community development department. So it's obviously not, you know, it's, these are true examples, they're true real life examples. So I, I know that. The trees are very important part of Fenimore Woods, but also something we want to just really continue to consider as we move through this project. With regards to safety and, and the public areas and where there's heavy usage. So with that, um, John, I didn't know if you had anything else to add about the condition of the trees, otherwise I figured we would just transition at this point. Uh, to the design elements.
That is perfect.
Great. Ian, you can go to the next slide. So just, you know, at high level, you know, we're really was a, it was a strategic planning process. Um, we analyzed existing conditions, uh, we looked at data and the things that we knew. Uh, we, we looked at our professional responsibility, uh, that we have to this park and to, that we have to the public and users that we're bringing to this park and inviting to this park. Um, and looked at industry's best standards. So, you know, when we, when we took a look at, you know, creating this central location. Uh, you know, where we have items that come together, like the playground, like the pavilion and bringing the bathroom into that. Is really, it, it's really a, a best practice in parks and recreation design to bring those features to the interior of the park. And of course, make them accessible. So Ian, if you could go on to the next slide, uh, just high level. Um, park usage, I'll, I'll just touch on this a little bit, um, because I, I want to make sure that everybody kind of understands like the level of rentals that occur. You know, it's almost every weekend really from April to October. You know, where we have over forty rentals on average per year. We had years where there's, where, there were as many as eighty a year. Um, those numbers, of course, waned over the years, particularly when, particularly when the bathrooms were no longer available and they became portable toilets. So. We did see a dip, um, you know, in the last ten to twelve years where the rentals came more down into the forty, fifty. Uh, this year I think we're on a pace of like fifty-five rentals. We have annual user groups that are Radnor based. Um, programming that takes place at the park. Uh, we used to have a nature camp that took place at the, at the park, uh, during the summer for six weeks. Um, and those are some programs that we've just, we've gotten away from. Um, obviously not having the bathroom facility has been really critical to that. Um, and we recognize that it's, you know, it is a great space for a lot of different reasons. Um, the playground, you know, we talk about. The key, key locations, you know, the pavilion, the playground, the pond, the, the three Ps that people go to the park for. Um, that is, you know, a big part of a lot of folks. Um, you know, growing up and, you know, things that they get to experience, which is, is really amazing. Um, but when we dig a little further into the design, if you want to go to the next slide, Ian. You know, we, obviously we went back through all the existing conditions, the things that we just looked at, you know, how can we address these aging hazardous. Um, you know, amenities across the park site. And, you know, how can we tie that in with the feedback that we've gotten, you know, over the years when we've heard things like, okay, you know. We'd like to have running water at the, at the pavilion, you know, there's a need for electric, there's a need to have bathrooms that are proximate. Um, a lot of people, of course, wanting walking paths, you know, that's something that we saw, you know, be very successful, uh, when they were added over at Clement Crone. Um, not to mention creating that central accessible safe location where, you know, we, we had a pavilion. Um, well, we had a restroom that was way far at the back of the park. We had the, we had the pla- the playground area at the front of the park. Made it very difficult for, you know, a mother there with families, uh, with her family, you know, trying to traverse the large amount of space back and forth. Um, and again, like this ties to a best practice in, in park design approach in which we took. Um, accessibility and trying to meet inclusivity where we could throughout the park was, was obviously a major goal. So that we could create a space that's equitable for, for all park users, um, which is something we have heard about a lot throughout the years. Um, in difficulty with, with certain visitors not being able to navigate the park and experience the park. So if you want to go to the next slide, Ian, so this just shows an image of Clement Crone. Um, where you see, um, the construction, the project that took place in two thousand and seventeen where the features were brought all together into one location. Um, next slide. Just another image, um, you know, kind of showing, uh, the amenities and everything there at that park and the growth. Um, next slide. So here's where, um, I'm going to actually transition, um, to Gilmore and Associates, just to talk a little bit about. Um, some of the ADA standards and how those were factored into the development at the park. And then we may jump around a little bit, uh, to some of the other slides. So I don't know TJ, if you're going to talk on behalf of Gilmore. Um, but if you are, uh, we can bring up a different slide if you want the design slide.
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay, so Ian, next slide. Next slide. Right there.
Okay, so this is the concept plan that I became up with for the Fenimore Woods Park. As Tammy has alluded to. Um, accessibility was one of the biggest issues. As many of you know, um, the park has severe grade change. So with trying to make things accessible, you need to not completely flatten things, but. It needs to be at a certain percentage of the slope in order for someone with a disability to be able to get themselves from point A to B. So. Along with moving all the central elements to, to the center of the park, we had to figure out a way. Grading wise to get, actually get people to the center of the park. And with that comes grading change. So. Um, if we want to walk through the plan a little bit here, you know, to the north, um, is a new parking lot, new gravel parking lot with ADA. Compliant parking. Yep, that's up there, that little turnaround. So it's the existing entryway, we added a second entryway. And then below that starts the walking trail. So these walking trails are stone walking trails. Uh, they kind of make a loop throughout the upper portion of the park. Uh, and kind of center around that, that core that we designed here, which is the playground, the pavilion. And what turned out to be a dry stream for stormwater purposes. And we bisected that straight through the center with what we were calling basically a spine. So that center walkway that leads to and from the pavilion as well as to and from the northern and western parking lots is completely accessible. And that is more or less a requirement based on ADA standards to be able to get people from ADA spaces to whatever. Um, we have designed or put in place. So that includes the playground, the pavilion, um, at one point. Uh, fireplace area, things like that. So whenever, whatever we, we put in place, we have to be able to get people to. Especially those with disabilities. And that became and presented to be, you know, quite a challenge for reaching those grades, but those grades were achieved. So it is completely accessible, it just took some, some grading and maneuvering. Like the um, path that you can see kind of bends above the playground and crosses the dry stream. That has to bend in a way, uh, at that length. In order to get people from those parking spaces up to the ADA accessible restrooms and pavilion area. And then the spine itself takes you to the other parking area for the same purposes. So if you want to keep going, I guess, next slide. Is this, yeah. So when we started to look at this more, um, obviously the trees became an issue with this. Um, it is Fenimore Woods and obviously nobody likes cutting trees down, but. Uh, part of the other portion of this is with the grading is stormwater. So as Tammy alluded to before. Stormwater was not something that was considered a long time ago. Uh, now it is, the, the park had no stormwater infrastructure in it. So with making these improvements, we had to find a way to not only make it accessible, but also manage stormwater. So this was, is basically presented as a, an al- an alternative option for this more or less. So. This consists of two separate rain gardens, um, one in the upper area below the parking lot that manages that whole area. Um, a new lower rain garden that is adjacent to the pavilion and playground area is connected into the. Uh, dry stream area, which is used to convey the stormwater from the upper site, upper portion of the site rather than use a pipe. And kind of use the stormwater features to make it both accessible and educational for anybody who wanted to use the park. And then of course, they're connected by both parking areas, which maintain our accessibility and connecting everybody to the center and to the core of the park. So, I'm not sure Tammy, if you want to speak a little more about this or.
Absolutely. Um, so, um, what I, what I also wanted to point out, um, also just to make clear is that, you know, after. Obviously evaluating all of the existing conditions and, and having discussions and, and putting this together. Um, we tasked Gilmore and Associates to come in to work through this project in this nature. Um, it wasn't that they had a blank canvas and just, you know, pluck the part down on it the way they thought it should look. So. You know, it was, it was, as I mentioned, it was, it was strategic. Um, you know, we also knew that there was, uh, going to have to be a balance to try to be achieved. In terms of preservation of the trees, um, and, and balancing the, the features of the park and, and making sure that they're safe and accessible. Making sure the stormwater management works and that we're able to meet the ordinance. So those were all really important strategic steps that went into this. And then once we had the plan, you know, then obviously is where, you know, discussion started where this was presented at the Parks and Recreation Board. And I'm not going to step back through all the steps that took place, but, um, you know, there was a lot of meetings with residents and. You know, we started to talk about the plan and, and work through the process of the elements, uh, to where we've gotten to today. Um. So really, you know, uh, one of the other features I, I know, I, I think you kind of pointed out and touched a little bit on it, TJ was just. You know, the improved park access, you know, that really was critical. Um, I know that there are times where the park, you know, it, it's not heavily, heavily utilized by a lot of vehicular traffic. But there are times as we saw in some of the images and the exam, example that, you know, with the party that we had on Friday where it is. Um, and in the grand scheme of usage, um, you know, having a, a fifty person, you know, registered party or rental. Is, you know, about the average. Um, you know, we, we get them as, as, as little as ten to thirty and then we get them as, as much as a hundred and fifty to two hundred. Um, I know there have even been times where we have to have our police department manage some of the traffic flow and parking in and around that area. So just something to kind of keep in mind, if, you know, if, I know there's been some discussion about reducing the parking areas because they're not needed. Um, and I just, I know that the usage begs to differ that point. Um, and if that's the case where we think we do want to reduce usage, then, you know, we can put caps on parties and things like that. And, you know, there's obviously controls and things that can be put in, in the future as we, as we go through this. So the park access was definitely, you know, the, the ingress and egress was something that came with heavy consideration. So if you want to go on to the next slide, Ian. Um, next slide. So I, TJ, I don't know if you wanted to talk specifically about the drainage concept plan, or if you feel like you've covered this, you know, enough of this already.
I can go over it, just, just briefly to go over, um, you know, as I said before, there, uh, stormwater is very important. To this park, it previously had none. So, uh, stormwater management, so in order to meet not only Radnor Township codes. But to meet Delaware County Conservation District codes for, you know, all the permitting and things for this. We needed to manage a, a significant amount of stormwater because nothing was being done previously. And we're, you know, we're altering things here. So, um, the rain garden in the central little islet you see there below the, the rain. Below the parking lot that manages most of, if not all of, the upper portion of the park, the northeast portion of the park. Uh, the reason it is there is because we tried to stay away from, and you can kind of see, you know. The blurred lines of where we affected, where we didn't affect. Um, we really wanted to stay away from the buffer of Eastern University. We didn't want to get too close to it. Real, realistically, the, you know, the, the stable building was our, our border here. We didn't really want to go past that. So that system is tied into several other rain garden systems. So there's smaller ones you see to the left there. In that central grove of trees and there's, uh, actually there is one in below that as well. Um, they're tied into, as I said before, there's a dry stream, that's that dashed blue line that curves right through the middle of the park. And that essentially takes. A, a good portion of the stormwater from the upper portion of the core of the park. And sends it down below to be treated in a rain garden and eventually in that square down there in an underground basin. But it does it in a way that, like I said before, you know, doesn't, doesn't use pipes. You know, we, we wanted this to, to be natural so that it, you know, when it's dry, it just looks like a riverbed that's planted. When it's wet, it looks like a very slowly trickling stream depending on the, the storm event. And then as a safety measure on the top, you see that dashed line that kind of wraps around the circle up top, which is a swale to a drain to ensure that nothing, realistically, nothing gets by and affects the playground or the pavilion or, you know, the dry stream or anything like that and overloads anything, as well as one smaller rain garden below the playground. So there is extensive stormwater that went, stormwater design that went into this design. It wasn't simply just, you know, dragging and dropping elements, you know, where we thought we could, we could put them. This was, this was a lot of strategic engineering and design, especially with stormwater.
Okay, next slide Ian, I think this is where, I don't know, John, if you want to take this with regards to the tree identifications.
Yeah, so I mean, this is just a layout of the trees that were deemed risk related. These are the 29 trees. They're color coded in purple here for easy identification. So I mean, it's something we could talk about, I guess, when we get to the question portion. If anybody has any specific questions about these trees. But it's laid out and they are coded for any residents or visitors that want to review them. And I'm happy to meet onsite with anybody through them as well.
So next slide, I think is, just if, I don't know if you want to explain this one so folks have an understanding if we go back to it.
So the purple again are the trees that are slated as the 29 hazardous trees and the trees with the Xs and the orange are the trees to be removed for construction purposes.
Next slide.
And these are the list of the hazardous trees within the 29 that we have been discussing this evening.
And the next slide, I think, is the tree tables. I don't know if you guys want to talk about these at all. I know this was the one that was presented to the Shade Tree Committee when the project debuted with them in July of 2020.
I'll let TJ talk about this a little bit.
Okay, and then maybe TJ, I don't know if you want to maybe just go to the updated tree table.
Sure.
Next slide then Ian.
So the original amount of trees, I believe, is 143 from the first time we presented at the Shade Tree Commission. Since then, I've gone out with John Hossback, you know, him and I have reidentified those trees, the 29 specifically speaking of. And then in, you know, working with Tammy and the township, we, you know, in taking some elements out in that altered plan, we were able to not have to affect as many trees. So that number went from 143 down to 111. There were some more trees, as John alluded to, that were affected just because their health declined. But our number generally went down. And with that was kind of, I think, as Tammy alluded to previously, was a bit of a trade off in accessibility. So we decided not to have the turnaround drop off and walkway down to the pond, which limits accessibility, but also limits the, you know, it's a bit of a catch 22 because it does limit the impact on the amount of trees we're taking out here and some significant sized trees. So the compensatory tree amount went down as well.
And the next slide, I think, just represented one of the examples of the contours that you had to prepare in order to save some of the trees as we went along.
Sure, we did this in quite a few areas. This is one by the pavilion and the dry stream. There were other areas, like I said, along Eastern University where we could have extended and probably should have extended grading a little bit further for tie-ins. But in order to save some larger trees and some medium sized trees, we just really don't want to affect or come within their drip line as far as grading. You know, we can't fill on a tree because it tend to, I guess, if you want to call it suffocated, and we can't cut on it because we'll expose its roots. So that's just kind of how grading can affect a tree. So we tried wherever we possibly could to kind of bend contours around to not have to affect these in ways we normally would.
So the next slide is just a summary of the benefits of the project. In essence, really just, you know, hoping to restore the safety and functionality of the park features, you know, which we know are heavily utilized and reestablish the park as being welcoming and accessible for all the residents. You know, providing native tree and landscaping plan to bring the park, you know, to make it vibrant, to, you know, really just re-landscape and make it a more welcoming space and a more green space in many areas. They obviously institute stormwater management throughout the site, which isn't currently an existing, isn't currently existing. You know, incentivize people to continue to use the park for active and passive recreation and boost health and wellness and obviously serve as a great catalyst for the neighborhood. As we see, you know, with parks that have been renovated and, you know, different recreational amenities, you know, that brings about a lot of prosperity within the different neighborhoods throughout the township and obviously everywhere for that matter. So just lastly, to kind of switch gears, I know we, the next slide, just really is just kind of high level. You know, we, we know that with the incline replacement, you know, comes some challenges. It also comes some strong consideration. And I know that we're going to have some of that conversation here potentially shortly. But, you know, we, we want to take a look at things like the pavilion replacement. You know, what would that look like? You know, what would the grading implications be? And the corresponding tree removals if we just did, you know, an existing replacement? And then, you know, maybe we want to evaluate, do we want to reduce the size of the pavilion? Do we want it to, you know, instead of accommodating and being able to accommodate groups of 30 plus or more? Maybe we want to reduce that. Those are certainly considerations. The bathrooms, you know, I think, you know, it, this, I think it might be a long shot to keep the stable building. I know that, you know, it's going to cost us a lot of money. I don't think it's going to be feasible. I think there's going to be a lot of hurdles with that. So at that point, we need to figure out, you know, are bathrooms feasible in and around the pavilion? And if so, you know, what are those impact? Again, what are those impacts going to be to the grading and to any type of tree removals? You know, maybe keeping portable toilets at the site is the best approach at this point. So I think there's a lot of things we want to look at with regards to that. The playground is another area of consideration. You know, if we don't move it, you know, what's feasible? We know it sits on a slope. Are we still able to make it accessible? There's going to be some challenges with that. We know that it's going to be difficult to just nudge it over because it's going to fall into that swale. So there's things that we'll need to consider with that regard, with regards to the safety. The parking lots, you know, are definitely, you know, obviously, the way the park is utilized now, we know that there's a level of reorganization that's needed. If we don't change or expand them, you know, maybe there's a way to put restrictions and cap rentals and things that occur at the park. So there's definitely a lot of considerations that we can do. I know we've looked at raised boardwalks throughout the park, you know, versus any type of walkways. We know that those aren't necessarily drag and drop systems. They're still, they have to be installed. There's still going to be, you know, some impact to root systems and how does that impact trees? So, you know, those are things that we obviously can evaluate and we can talk about a lot more as we go through this. So just in closing, this last slide Ian, I just want to thank everybody who's been part of the process. I know, you know, we're eager to bring about a bright future for Fenimore Woods that can last and serve generations of all of our residents for years and years. And really just want to extend our thanks to obviously the residents who've been part of the process, the Parks and Recreation Board, and of course, the commissioners, you know, for all of their support and all of their discussion, not only here tonight, but leading up to this point.
Great, thank you very much. We have next on the agenda, public participation. Before we get to that, I'd like to just very briefly say something. And obviously, if any other commissioners have anything that they want to share, I'd like to hear from them as well. The first thing that I want to say is for me, and I speak only for myself in this, the question that I would like to hear answered by the residents is whether they have the interest in the park that they've seen showcased here, whether they want to send the Parks Committee back to the drawing board to do whatever they can do with the understanding that you've heard from someone who's been working on this project for a long time and who has a lot of expertise, that the alternative options are quite limited. Or if you want us to do as little as possible. But that being said, I want to stress, and like I say, this is me speaking for me and our board, as little as possible means taking down the dangerous buildings and the dangerous trees. While I'm totally happy to hear from anyone who wants to say that they disagree with John Hossback about the safety of the trees that he's called out. At the end of the day, I just, it doesn't matter to me. And the reason why is because you may be right or you may be wrong. But the simple reality is that if we end up deciding to Bigfoot the decision of our expert and instead decide to keep the trees that he said to take down and we're wrong about even one of them and somebody gets killed, obviously, that is in and of itself the biggest harm. We also, as a township, I don't know if our insurance would cover us if we knowingly chose not to take down hazardous trees based on the decisions of laypeople relying on the opinions of other laypeople. And if we ever change our insurance, I don't want to have to keep in the brain space of everybody in the township the question. So will the new insurance cover us for harms that are caused by stuff that, you know, et cetera? So I just, for me, the hazardous trees have to come down and I apologize. I'm not eager to do that, we will replant. But that's not really my question. My question for everybody is, do you want to see the park improved as you've seen now? Do you want to see some reduced plan? Or do you want to see us just take down the minimal amount of trees and structures that we have to? The other thing that I want to say is that I've kind of gotten a preview from some people that I've spoken with about what they want to say tonight. Number one, from a mechanical standpoint, I see that we have 41 attendees. We're going to give people five minutes to speak each. However, we cannot spend five minutes times 41 people. The evening is just not going to work that way. So I'm going to ask you guys, if you are repeating somebody else's point to the most extent possible, please just say, I agree with Mr. Smith or Mr. Jones or whomever. I'm also going to say though, that I've heard that there are some people who want to get up and attack staff members and I'm just not going to listen to that. I'm going to put you on mute because this is not that forum. Number one, no one has done anything. There's nothing for anyone to be attacked about. There have been many, many, many public meetings on this and it has repeatedly been vetted by township boards, members of the public. Everybody at the township level has done their jobs extraordinarily well. And if at the end of the day, the public does not want this park, awesome, I can definitely find uses for the money, which are not Fenimore Woods. Do not worry, we will find another place to spend the money. But nobody has made a mistake, nobody has done their jobs poorly and nobody deserved to be attacked for showing up and doing their jobs well. So if you have something to say, I'm going to ask you to be civil or not to say it at all. So with that in mind, the other commissioners, who are more politic than I am and polite than I am. Lisa, I thought I saw you waving.
Yeah, I just, first, I want to say, you know, Tammy and to all those involved in the project, I do know that you guys have worked really hard. I know that there's been a lot of vetting with our committees. I sat through, I think, at least two, maybe, maybe at least two presentations to the Shade Tree Committee. And I do believe that you did make adjustments in order to try to preserve trees after one of those meetings. Am I like remembering incorrectly? Or I feel like you did take into consideration some of their comments around that. So, you know, when you look at the plan itself, it certainly is a really nice plan. And I guess my very first question is just going to be, and maybe it's along the lines of what Commissioner Larkin just said. You know, do we want this park to be a park, a recreational park? Do we want this park to also maintain the pavilion situation that we have going on, which, you know, obviously makes it more multi-use, I guess? But then, you know, certainly it becomes a rental space basically for the township. If, if we don't do that, suppose we remove the pavilion part of the plan altogether, does that even, does that, will that save some trees? Does that then reduce the need for some of the parking? I believe that this park is, I've been over there. I was over there actually several weeks ago, actually walked part of it that I had never walked, walked around the pond, which I'd never done before. You know, it does, it needs improvement and I would certainly be all for improving it. It definitely needs improvement when it comes to accessibility. I think that that is a very important aspect of this project that I would not want to lose because I believe that everybody should be able to access all of the facilities that we have. I just wonder if in order to kind of strike a balance, oh, and when it comes to the hazardous trees, those need to go. I'm sorry, and I guess I'm a little upset that we have known, John, I think you said maybe since 2018, that some of these trees, and we keep adding more every year, that they are hazardous and need to come down. So, and I know that we don't always have the funding to do all the tree maintenance that needs to happen. I know that that is an issue of the township. But if there are hazardous trees, they need to come down, especially if we're renting it out and there are students and we're inviting people to a park where we know there's hazardous trees. That to me is a huge concern. So I guess my main point, my main questions are, you know, could we reduce the amenities and are people interested in that? And if we reduce the amenities, say we get rid of the pavilion, does that reduce the need for parking? Do we want this just to be a place where, you know, kids can come, families can come? There's a playground. Does every park need to have everything? You know, I don't know. And I want to hear from the residents on that, similar to Commissioner Larkin. I think that the building that is hazardous needs to come down. You know, as much as people would like to save that, I think what we've seen historically in this township is that is a heavy lift. The township doesn't have the funds to restore buildings like that. And unless, you know, you have people that are willing to step up to do that, it's a heavy lift. So I think that that, that part of the project needs to happen. So those are my thoughts initially around this. I would like to be able to see if we can strike a balance. You know, John did a really good job in noting, you know, 60% of the trees have 25 to 30 year lifespan. Is that, and I guess my question is, is that in total? Or is that from this moment on, they still have another 25 to 30 years? You know, to me, that's a pretty significant life for a tree. And, you know, do we want to jeopardize that kind of mature canopy and take that down? So those are my initial thoughts. And I definitely am interested in hearing from the community because I think it's about balancing. You know, we're going to have to balance and what's important.
Just quickly add, I'm anxious to hear from the community. So I'm not going to state any opinion now about it. I do want to thank staff and our consultants for all the work that went into it and a very thorough presentation. But I'm very interested in hearing what everyone has to say. Clearly, this is, means a lot to a lot of people. So thank you for being here.
Any final commissioner comment and then we can open up the floor.
I think Kathy.
Yeah, just sort of to reiterate, and I'm not sorry. If something's hazardous, it has to go. So from both a legal standpoint, insurance standpoint, liability standpoint and a human standpoint, we cannot let something continue, whether it's a tree or it's a building that could harm, kill, maim somebody, that's just irresponsible. So with regard to the rest of it, I'm all ears. But those things that are hazardous, that are dangerous to people, they have, they have to be addressed, attended to and removed. So there we are.
Great. Thank you all very much. Commissioner Higgins, you are up first.
Hi, everybody, it's actually not Commissioner Higgins. My name is Jim Higgins III, I live on South Devon Avenue. Thanks a lot for everyone's time tonight. I know you've been over this for many years. And it's, it's been a long adventure. There's a lot of us just became aware of it recently. I'm just struck by how long we've been working at this and this is the best we can come up with. Basically, a plan that destroys Fenimore Woods as we know it. I'm pretty outraged and upset about it, as are a lot of other people. As a fellow Democrat, this is As a fellow Democrat, this is, we are environmentalists, and this is where the rubber hits the road. In good conscience, we can't let a plan to take down a hundred-some plant, trees, including twelve heritage trees, to be done in the name of a sterile playground, like we already have throughout the township. I have little kids, Clonacron's a park that we can't go to after June first, because of how sterile and hot it is. This is a shady space. We keep hearing about a facility-based park, this is not a wedding venue. This is not a wedding venue. This is a wooded area, a natural preserve, one of the few places with heritage, old growth trees. And that's the priority here. I would encourage the commissioners to go for a minimalist approach here. There's zero reason to have the best of the best playground here. We don't even need to, we have a five-year-old and a ten-year-old. We go there to spend time in the woods and the shade. Has anybody in the township thought that maybe the facility is popular because of the shade? And when we take the shade down, there'll be no need for the rental anymore. Nobody's renting it for the location. It's, it's disturbing to think that anyone of good conscience could advocate for the destruction of a hundred and twelve, a hundred and eleven healthy, mature trees. We know what trees, especially oaks, mean to our ecosystem. There's a lot of recent research about what oaks provide. I heard maybe fifteen times by township employees that there's no water management system in our, in this park. That's disingenuous. There are hundreds of oak trees. Oaks, I don't know if our arborist knows this, but oaks have, they soak in between fifty and two hundred gallons of water per day. You remove the oaks to put in an engineered tank, it doesn't make any sense. It's backwards. I also encourage the board to seek second opinions. With all due respect, this is not personal, but good governance requires a system of checks and balances. Do we ever ask for a second opinion when it comes to trees? It doesn't make sense to have someone who's not employed, not elected, have so much power in the decisions of nature. We also have few environmentalists in the Parks and Rec Board. What about a conservationist who can talk about the need for ecology repair? If we read the, if we read the works, the research about oak trees and its benefit to pollinators, there is no turning away from what it can do. It's not just for shade, guys, it's for our ecology and our food chain. Food chain starts with the eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven caterpillars that live in mature oaks. This is high-value food for birds and their nestlings. There's a direct correlation between the destruction of mature trees, like is being proposed today, and the steeping decline of our bird population. Birds can't adequately feed their young without mature trees. We're just adding to this problem, because we want a nicer playground? I say, take the pavilion out and keep it a wild area. This is what people want. This is not called Fenimore Park. This is called Fenimore Woods. Let's keep it a wooded area, just as we don't cut down trees and skunk hollow that had a dead limb. Let's take this away from pavilion use, and just have a nice area that benefits wildlife in the area. I want to see the rest of my time to all the other people who are outraged by this really poor plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Mr. Bernisi, you're up next.
Hi, everybody, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Sorry, my voice is a little bit messed up, but I am also in disagreement with this plan. I echo a lot of things that Mr. Higgins just said, but some things I just would like to add is that I don't think anybody woke up one morning years ago and said to themselves, man, this public space would be so much better without these large, beautiful, shady canopy trees. I'm guessing what happened was, there was a sensible and well-intentioned desire to fix certain aspects of the park. I heard about the parking lot, the pavilion, et cetera. Then what ends up happening is, as the design firm just mentioned, trying to accomplish one requirement necessitates that you do others' things. And then what we end up with is a plan where something like a hundred healthy trees are going to be cut down. I certainly am not advocating not to cut down unhealthy trees that are a risk. I'll come out and help you do it, I get it, right? That's important. But it's the hundred or so healthy trees that I'm in opposition to. And I believe the numbers that were presented a minute ago indicate that there would be twelve heritage trees now to be removed as part of the plan. I believe five of which are unhealthy, which still means seven healthy heritage trees, if I saw those numbers correctly. So what I'm asking for is simply that we regroup and come up with a revised plan that takes all these trade-offs into consideration. I think if you were to ask most of the community, and it's going to be interesting to hear all these forty-one comments tonight, I think, I think that, given the, 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 the plan as it is, with all the destruction of the trees, most people would choose not, would choose that that's not an acceptable trade-off. And lastly, I just want to encourage the township folks and the commissioners to turn to their own research that was done as part of the comprehensive land use plan of 2003. That plan, I believe, had seven objectives published. A lot of time and township money was spent on this plan. It's really incredible, I encourage everybody to read it. One of the objectives outlined is, quote, "work to preserve the natural woodlands which remain in the township through minimum tree disturbance, and incorporate, incorporate rigorous tree removal standards." I don't really think that this project designed the way it stands reflects that desire that the township itself published back in 2003. Thanks a lot, everybody, for all your hard work on this plan. I know a lot of effort is going into it, and I appreciate being able to voice my concern tonight.
Great, thank you. Cameron Azarano, you are up next.
Hello there, thank you so much. Also very much appreciate the opportunity to speak. I do have to say that I don't know why we needed to listen to an hour of a re-presentation of a plan. I do know there were some changes made to the plan. I think the last slide of the plan should have been the first, considering the fact that the township is very well aware that there are a lot of residents that are very upset about this. And so forgive me if I sound a little bit extra razz, because quite frankly, I am. That was our time, in my opinion, to speak. Why did I say that? Because if you refer to the Fenimore fact sheet, which I take significant issue with, in fact, if it was, you know, in my authority, I would say that fact sheet should come off of the website. I refute much of the information that is in that fact sheet. But what I will refer to is the series of meetings that started in September of 2016. No public comment. Parks and Rec 2017, no public comment. 2018, BOC, when the project was approved, no public comment. February 7th to 2019, Parks and Rec, there were four comments that were made. Approximately thirteen members were there. That was the meeting after receiving the letter from the township announcing the quote-unquote improvement plan. That is, in my opinion, also offensive to refer to the plan that is proposed as an improvement plan. That is a complete reconstruction, revision, potentially, you can apply that there, but you are completely repurposing and reconstructing that park. It goes on and on from there. Another Parks and Rec, two comments, no public comment, one public comment, one public comment. So the bottom line is, for the five years that this project has been talked about, we haven't been able to, and we have not been a part of it. I live a quarter mile from the park, and I stumbled across it. And so the fact that we're even here today is, is, in my opinion, a blessing, and I'm grateful for it. Commissioner Browski, I really appreciated the fact that you've been on the past couple of Shade Tree meetings. That means a lot. I think you've had some really valuable comments, and I appreciated what you had to share today, and the fact that you went to the park. I think what I will say is, the tree that was shown, the picture of the house that was crushed by the tree on Poplar, that's a neighbor of mine, that was a healthy tree. A healthy tree fell down on that house. That was not a hazardous tree. So are we saying that we, as a township, are now going to cut down all of the trees, because they're a risk? I didn't really agree with that scare tactic. None of us, as a part of this coalition, would argue the fact that if a tree is dangerous, it should come down. I think, as Commissioner Browski said, if there was a tree that fell while people were in the pavilion in 2018, why was that tree not taken care of? That is something that we are asking for. We are asking for tree maintenance, so that we can maintain the wooded park. I think the last point that I would like to make is two things. We've heard a lot about what the people want and what the people want, and my question is, where are those people? Because in three months of polling people, I have yet to find one person who wants to see that wooded park go, the Fenimore Wood Zone. Not one, I literally have not come across one person. So, you know, with all due respect, Tammy, if you could provide the documentation of the people who have, all of the people over the years, I think that that would be very valuable, because it seems to be a lot of the teeth as to why we need to do this dramatic, you know, destroying the park, quite frankly. And I guess I would also just echo the sentiments that, if this park is so undesirable as the fact sheet describes it, why is it so highly rented and used? And is a public park to be reconstructed for the purpose of being a rental revenue? I don't think so. It's not Parks and Rec's park, it's the township park, it's our park. And from what I've learned, we have two-hundred-and-forty-eight signatures on a petition. I think there's a lot of people that would really urge the board to say, in my opinion, keep the footprint exactly as is, let's improve the pavilion, rehab the stables, we have $2 million. I can't imagine, but there's not a way to rehab those stables. It's a beautiful, old architectural stone building, and keep the playground where it is. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall, you are up.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We've got you.
Yes, good evening. Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, Wayne, PA. I'm not going to re- recant what we just heard from Mr. Higgins and Ms. Azarano, but I was, I was on a recent Parks and Rec meeting where a lot of the data surrounding the removal of the trees was just absolutely wrong, and it was wrong to the extent that I had to go back to a few of the commissioners and point that out from the very beginning. So I would concur with Mr. Higgins. I would make the analogy that if you're going to cut off your arm or your leg, you should get a second opinion. If we're taking down this many mature canopy trees that provide good stormwater management and shade, we should absolutely have a second opinion from an arborist. And Jack and Lisa, I don't mean to get so detailed, but as you know, I spent tens of hours, if not hundreds of hours, trying to keep the canopy at the gateway, and for unknown reasons, hundreds of trees, you know, possibly many trees that were in poor decline, were taken down and clear-cut. And hours upon hours of work that went into trying to save the gateway were essentially wasted. And I've heard since that no other trees will be planted there, based on the PennDOT ruling. So this, this meeting should really be conducted in person. It should be at the township building with very specific plans. I concur with Mrs. Azarano, we are not in the business of catering functions in rental places. Radnor Township has two areas of mature canopy trees like this. One in Ms. Browski's ward, which is in the fourth ward, where we have skunk hollow, we have the willows. And lastly, lastly, the first ward, where we have some remaining mature trees left. And we know that there's going to be further development with Valley Forge Military Academy, and potentially down the road with Cabrini and Eastern. So do we really want to have this amount of deforestation occur in one of the only two places left in the township where we have old growth trees? And I will stop my comments there, but thank you for considering all the above.
Great. Coco Connor, you're up next.
Hi, I'm Coco, and I'm also doing this speech with my friend Jane. So did you allow her to meet too?
Let me see, is that Jane Driscoll?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Jane, you are unmuted as well.
Hi, so, um, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm making, so we're going to begin. Making a park more safe and accessible for people with disabilities, and rebuilding the pavilion is amazing, and we fully support that. Jane and I have two main points to make. I'm going to say one point first, and then Jane will do the next one. What, chopping down a hundred-and-thirty mature trees can negatively affect animals. There are over sixty birds and mammals that can live in a single mature tree. We empower you to use the lumber, bark, and leaves from trees that are sick and diseased, not healthy and thriving animal homes. Okay, Jane's going to do the next.
It's amazing that you planned to replant these new trees, but it can take some trees, it can take some trees about eighty to ninety, eighty, ninety, or a hundred years to fully reach adulthood. Plus, not only that, but young trees are very fragile. They would die without proper care. You may think that there are so many trees, and just cutting down a hundred-and-eleven trees isn't a big, isn't not a big deal. But plus, the people who love and grew up and have memories within the trees of Fenimore Woods, cutting down would hurt us too.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to let us speak. I hope you consider these two items in your decision. Let's cut down fewer trees and make our world a healthier and happier place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Maggie Myers, you are up next.
Yeah, hi, I just wanted to add to the above comments that Fenimore Woods is not just a park, it's Fenimore Woods. And I think we could probably make it ADA accessible without moving the pavilion, potentially rebuilding in the same spot with facilities as necessary. The playground and the idea that it's unsafe being next to the road, I don't know about anybody else, but I love driving by that playground and seeing the kids play and watching it all. And I think, yes, a chain-link fence on the edge is not lovely, but a better fence could improve things. I just don't see that moving either the playground or the basic pavilion structure needs to happen if it means moving so many large trees and heritage trees. I again agree with everyone, Jack and Lisa, about the dangerous trees need to come down. There's no question about that. But otherwise, saving trees is a good thing, and we don't want to see people chain the trees before the guys come there, and then a big political issue about it. Thanks.
Thank you. John McDonald, you're up next.
Hi, I'm John McDonald, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live around the corner, and we've been residents of Radnor for twenty years, raised both our kids here, and in fact, I was a leader of CubPAC 284, and we use the park every year as our new registration. And the reason for that was because it's the woods, and it has a completely different character than many of the other parks because of the mature trees. And I think it's really important that we do everything we can to protect them, just as other people were saying. So I'll be brief, but I think that those two young ladies probably said it best. I think I agree with them completely, that maybe some facilities could be upgraded, but not to the extent to redesign everything to accommodate a beautiful design, but that design didn't really take into consideration the existing, I don't think, all the existing, you know, heritage trees that are critical to keep. So I just want to voice my support for improvements, but not to the extent that is being proposed. And I do want to say, thank you so much for all the effort, because it's clear that you heard our concerns, that you went back that you heard our concerns, that you went back to the drawing board and looked to move things around to try to preserve some of the more significant trees. But I think more can still be done. So I appreciate all the effort that has been put forward so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kearney, you're up next.
Can you hear me? We've got you. Okay. My name is Michael Kearney. I live at 124 Walnut Avenue in the first ward. Me and my family have lived here since 1979. I'm a former member of the NWPA Board and the Radnor Historical Society as well. Many others spoken tonight have, have spoken to the trees. I want to speak up for the, for the Carriage House. The Carriage House was built around 1910. It was part of the estate that formed the bulk of what is now Fenimore Woods, belonged to a woman named Florence Justice. We know the names of the architects. It was McIlvain and Roberts. They were some of the main estate architects out here on the main line. Another of their major buildings you might be aware of was the big, the big mansion that used to be Chef Tel's Restaurant over at Lancaster and, and Stratford Avenue, which has been torn down. When the township secured the property in the early seventies, there was a mansion house there. The township tore it down. All right, that's now the parking lot, the upper parking lot in the park. The Carriage House was part of the original estate that was designed. It was built in 1910. McIlvain and Roberts were the, were probably the architects. This building is on the Historical Society's register of historical properties in the township. It was also placed on their list of the 10 most endangered historic structures within the township. This was 10 years ago. And in addition to this Carriage House were things the Historical Society put on, such as the Willows and Ardraus. So they're not, their approach is that this is not an insignificant building. We know the names of the architect. It's more than 100 years old. And I would just ask the commissioners in the, in the spirit of asking for second opinions. Of course, I was up at the Carriage House today and I certainly wouldn't want to go into it because it's, it has been allowed to deteriorate at least for 10 years. All right, probably more. The roof is falling in. There's, there's been no attempt that I can see at all to try and stabilize the building, to try and prevent water infiltration into the interior. So just by neglect, and since the township is the owner, the township has been neglecting to maintain the building. The only thing that's been done is that there's that, there's an orange fence at one side to keep people from coming too close. I would propose, I would really think it would be a good idea to try and preserve this building, reuse it in the park. It's been there for 100 years, maybe even longer than some of the trees, and it may even outlast some of them. If people will keep preservation in mind and do the right thing to see what needs to be done to stabilize the building and think of alternative uses for it within the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Gill, you are next.
Hi, good evening. Apologies. So, hi, this is Laura Gill, 244 North Everdeen Avenue. So as a project manager myself, I can certainly appreciate the work that went into this presentation and the preparation for this call. But I also appreciate that the commissioners provided us an opportunity for this public comment. On behalf of my family and about a dozen other families in the little Chicago neighborhood in Ward 1, I would like to say that we are in firm disagreement with the cutting down of the healthy trees that are in Fenimore Woods. This is one of the last remaining areas in the township of this nature that is primarily enjoyed, really for the shaded area rather than baseball fields, soccer fields, you know, you know, having the pavilion there is great, but it's really not the primary focus of why myself, my neighbors and friends enjoy this park. I would like to echo what previous commenters have mentioned, that my preference would be to rehab what is already existing, with the priority being to keep the healthy trees that are already on site. And lastly, I do wish that we had more representation from our township, specifically from the commissioner of this ward. So I'm hoping that the commissioners that are present tonight take the severity of the public comment into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Gill, I think that definitely the rule is going to be that if we don't build this park, then only the first, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth wards will use the money for their parks. I'm kidding, obviously. Commissioner Higgins, I tried to start with you. I apologize. You ended up being last on the list. You are up.
Okay, I just figured out how to unmute the microphone. Can you hear me, Jack?
We've got you.
Thank you for this opportunity and all the commissioners, Bill White and Tammy, for this opportunity to voice our opinions. I want to just clear up one thing. Jack, you asked who was on the Board of Commissioners in 2015, 16, when the bond issue was authorized. I was on the board. So I definitely am fully behind spending money on parks. But I, when I voted for that in 2016, I guess it was, it was not a vote for this plan that has the township staff has come up with. I'd like to do this. I'd like to just ask Jack and commissioners, if you can let the community voices that you're hearing tonight meet officially or informally, either way, with township staff to come up with a new plan. The one that, that we've heard tonight, which we've heard in the past also at lower, at the Parks and Recreation Board and Shade Tree Commission, is not one that has any acceptance or popularity in the community. So if we could work with Tammy and Steve Norsini and Gilmore and the arborist and second arborist, I think we need, definitely need a second arborist, we can come up with something that satisfies the needs that Tammy has talked about. What, what needs do I have in mind? I don't think the playground should be moved. If there's a safety problem because it's near Paul Road, we can protect the children with boulders if necessary. But moving that playground, as I understand it, is the seminal reason why we're going to lose all these trees. If we keep the playground where it is, we don't have to do all that extensive grading. The trees can stand. My good friend Mike Kearney just made a statement about the stables. I asked a friend named Cameron Lacy to look at the stables and he provided me and others with a report. I'd like to submit that to you, Jack and to Bill White, to report on what can be done with those stables. It is true that the roof and any wooden furnishings are in terrible condition, but the masonry walls are solid. Also, we have utility servicing that, those stables. And maybe we don't need to build a new bathroom in the center of the park. Maybe we can outfit the existing stables again and have that serve as a bathroom. So that is all I think, just the final point is let the community work with staff to come up with a plan. The last thing I wanted to hear when I was a commissioner is negative voices. Come up with something positive. That's, that's the value that people can, can deliver to the Board of Commissioners in this case. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Sarah Pilling, you are next.
Good evening. I may not live close by Fenimore Woods. I do live at 29 Garrett Avenue in Rosemont, but I can speak to Macron in addition to, of course, wearing my hat about climate change. There is just no way taking down trees in Radnor, but particularly mature canopy trees, which are so vital to mitigate some portions of climate change. To give you a practical example, I met a friend of mine who lives on the street. Two days ago, we started out in the sun. We ended up in the dappled shade of a Japanese maple, which is not dense shade. And the difference in the temperature was unbelievable. It was like, oh, look what's happened. I also want to speak to playgrounds that are in totally opening, open. I have another friend who has a little grandchild who came down from Massachusetts and granny put her in the wagon and took her over to Macron to play at noon the first week in May. And the child could not play near any equipment because by May it was so hot at noon. So we need shade for children, not hazardous trees. Fully agree the hazardous trees come down, but I think the plan should be revised to save as many of the trees as possible. I know they're going to be compensatory trees, but those are going to take 20 to 30 years to reach the canopy of a heritage tree. And whether you want to hear it or not, we do not have that length of time with climate change. Thank you.
Jocelyn Good, you are next.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I was actually at the playground this morning with my four and one-year-old. They had a wonderful time. I felt like the fence was actually really high. I felt really safe. There are so many playgrounds in the area where there's no fencing with the roads, that I actually felt wonderful knowing that my one-year-old could run and be protected. They loved watching the cars and trucks go by. And, and to echo some of the sentiments before, there are not a lot of playgrounds in this area that have any shade. So not only are you worried about, you know, skin concerns for these kids, and so many of the local schools and playgrounds are putting up canvas canopies now because they realize how important shade is. Obviously, it's not the same, but the slides get so hot, the swings get so hot that these kids can't play on them so much of the time. And this is just such a beautiful space to be able to take your children. Totally agree. If there's unsafe trees, absolutely bring them down. But, but if there's any reason, any way you can possibly save these trees, I think it's really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian Johnson, your turn.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We've got you.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Brian Johnson. I live maybe 500 yards up the road on, on Walnut and Radnor Street Road. I've been listening to the conversation. I was glad that I got a note from a friend of mine who forwarded me this notification. Thank you. I'd like to thank the, the commissioners for, for listening to us today and also in trying to ensure that Fenimore Woods has an optimum outcome. I, I do agree with others that the meeting should likely be in person to get public comment at this time in the COVID status, and we should try to do that. I'm in support of minimal trees and, you know, as loss as a first position. And, you know, we need to maintain all the trees as possible. I agree, we need to remove all the hazardous trees. I think that's clear. The liability is overwhelming. I would like to understand why we cannot take the minimum requirements for all the utilities that are there, fix the pavilion, you know, take advantage of existing playground location, which is on a straight street with a very low risk. I agree with the, the previous individual. Many comments so true. I drive by there all the time. There was very little danger of a person swerving off a road on a straight section like that. I think it's overrated, the risk. The old building, you know, the Carriage House, it's exactly what people like in this town and why Radnor is so great. History. History is what makes this place so unique, whether it's paley here, there, whatever. It's fantastic. And you start tearing those things down and you lose the nature of the neighborhood. I think that's pretty clear and we should all understand that. And, and the fact that it's been, all the maintenance on it's been deferred and neglected is a pretty clear statement of a lack of responsibilities, honestly. With, regarding the new proposal, I don't understand why bathrooms would be connected to an eating area, and which actually eliminates the open field that you're in the woods. That's, that's not favorable in my mind. You know, I don't see a reason why we need two parking lots at all. If you're gonna, you know, destroy an area, try to maintain it in the one, you know, whatever the case may be. I don't understand why we want to create water pools that catch water. I can only imagine it might be a place for mosquito growth, which is totally undesired. And also, you know, I, I just don't understand the full design and why we'd want to move the playground from where it is. I think it's perfectly fine. I see people playing there. I was shocked the other day at how many kids were having a great time with that playground as is. I didn't realize at all that it was unsafe. So we should not, we should fix it and keep it from being unsafe. One thing I want to point out is what others have noted, which is really shocking, is the commissioners are continuing allowing, maybe it's within codes or other, but we should be strongly against the amount of development that's going on at this time. And Radnor is alarming. Only 300 yards away up the street at the, you know, the eastern lot, you know, on the corner of Radnor Street Road and Walnut is about to be, or is scheduled to be, or is in debate to be redeveloped. And many trees there are completely torn down, probably over 100. We also have across the street where Valley Forge, which is, you know, suffering hard times, I believe, is about to sell off an entire lot and develop an entire center for elderly to, to use, which will create a lot of additional traffic and tremendous loss of trees and so forth. So I'm glad to hear that you had done some work to thwart some other development that was done. Thank you very much for that. But it's not enough. We have to be very careful that we're, you know, changing things at an alarming rate. I guess that's all I really wanted to say for now, or what I could write down while I was listening. The value of this area, and most importantly, Fenimore Woods, is the trees and the heritage trees and the history. We need to slow down and live with nature. Thank you for listening. Brian K. Johnson, 227 Radnor Street Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Mann, you're up.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I'm at 266 Beechwood Drive in the seventh ward. I'm a few blocks from Clem McCrone, that two-year-old granddaughter that was mentioned earlier. It was actually the last week in April. And I'll just note that she comes from Somerville, Mass. And they have a new park there that was built around some shade trees. And so it's usable in a much longer duration during the year. The other thing I wanted to mention is I appreciated the comment about the stormwater retention or, or absorption capacity of mature trees. But it was noted that there's erosion around the trees that's causing the roots to be exposed. That's not the tree's fault. That's the fault of not capturing the sheet flow that is causing the erosion. So in any planning, I hope that is taken into consideration. And finally, in the, in the proposal, I didn't see any indication that the parking areas themselves would have underlying stormwater retention. You know, stormwater, rain, rain gardens are a wonderful thing to add to the landscape, but they're, they're to sort of augment the stormwater capture we're doing. I hate to see them used just as a compensation element. We can, we can do more if you're adding stormwater. I mean, if you're adding parking areas, impervious surface, then capture the water underneath. I think that's all that I need to add to what's been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the comments that we have. Everybody, thank you. I think we're gonna adjourn. We appreciate your comments. We will at the next public meeting debate this, I guess.
Well. Not sure it's gonna, I don't want to promise that it's gonna be on the next agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We will. I, I think that what we should probably do, and I'll toss this to the commissioners and Bill, but we talked about offering, offering instructions right now. What I'll say is I think that I've heard pretty unanimously from the commissioners and maybe not quite unanimously from the public, but I've heard a lot of consensus that we should take down the dangerous trees. I've heard that we should, I've heard from a couple of people that we should try and find a way to keep the stables up. I'm sensitive to that. I, I don't know what we would do with them, honestly, if we kept them up. I don't think we can just stick a bathroom in those stables. I don't think that's going to work. I know that it would cost a lot of money to bring them up to code, but they would have to be ADA compliant. I, I see issues there. So I guess Tammy, if it were up to me, I'd say if you can find a way that's cost effective to fix the stables and make them into something great, more power to you. But I'm, I would be very surprised if we could. You're the only person who I imagine could. I don't think anybody else could, but I don't think even you will be able to. Beyond that, I'm gonna suggest that we give you firmer direction at a meeting. And the only reason I'm saying that is because this has not been advertised as a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We're short two commissioners. We don't have our solicitor. We probably need to advertise a little differently if we're gonna take official action. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would, and Tammy, perhaps you can refresh my memory because I wasn't really quite around when all of that was happening. When you all did the work at Clem McCrone, wasn't there a resident group that
When you all did the work at at Clem McCrone, wasn't there a a resident group that helped you, helped advise you on the work that was being done there? Am I like dreaming that or?
Yeah, so the the Garrett Hill Coalition uh in the Garrett Hill Implementation Committee were very active over the years in in wanting improvements, not only at Clem McCrone, but obviously at Emmental too, with the addition of the Comfort Station. Um which was also uh crafted into their, their neighborhood plan. Um so they, they definitely were a group that that rose up and, you know, were were trying to pioneer the efforts that took place at those parks.
So and I, obviously, they were, I guess, more fully organized groups that that kind of took this on as part of their uh their goals and mission. And I know that you have been vetting this through um you know, Parks and Rec and and whatnot and the other groups, but sometimes I think sometimes what happens is, you know, residents aren't always paying attention to what's happening at our boards and commissions unless they're being alerted to it. So I know, like, I spend a lot of time trying to let my people, you know, my ward know if I know something that's impacting our ward that is on one of the agendas um or something that people have expressed an interest in. So I just wonder if it it would be good to form, you know, and I'm not trying to give you more work around this, but would it be good to form like maybe like a Fenimore Woods advisory group that would help? You know, look at the current plan, like what could we, what could we do there and what do we wanna do then? And some of these decisions could also be in the commissioner's hands. Like I said, do we need that pavilion? I know that, you know, it 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 does generate revenue. Um you know, rental revenue, is that something that is significant? You know, we're always talking about, you know, we need more funds for things, so you certainly don't wanna cut off a revenue stream if it's, if it's significant. So, you know, what does that look like? So what are some of these? And I know that a lot of, you considered a lot of this also. So in, but you know, what are some of those things that we could talk about that are important or not important and look at it with the, in, with the plan in mind and how we could, if the end goal is to try to save the trees?
Yeah, so I mean, my, my recommendation would be is just, I know, like, going through this process, you know, we reached out to the NWPA, the North Wayne Protective Association. Um I actually met with Gail Morrison uh when we talked about the plan. Um so there, I know there was a degree of outreach and, you know, but none of those groups really latched onto it, if you will. So I guess, you know, if there is a group that, you know, was forming or is interested in forming, I would just suggest making sure the Parks and Recreation Board is involved in that in some way, and 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 maybe that's something that's facilitated through them. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of ideas and points that were brought up tonight. And if I may, I just wanted to make a a couple, a couple quick statements. Um one, the, the, the plan was never brought forward in the presentation tonight to be a revised plan. So I think we heard that a couple of times, that uh the the revised plan fell short. Um it was just an example of one of the things that we could do, you know, to make the park different. Obviously, there's a lot of different things that we could do and everybody has a lot of ideas. Um the other point was just about the, the arbor, the arborist. I know that we've been talking about getting second opinions and um really uh kind of, you know, debating uh John's professionalism to the project. Uh John never once stated that the healthy trees were unhealthy. Um he did his job all along in in making the correct statements about the trees. And I understand second opinions are just second opinions and, you know, it's you know, something, you know, obviously, we, we, we could definitely get if we wanted that, but I, I don't think John did anything nefarious here. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear. And he's done nothing but support the residents and meet them at the park. Um at the drop of the hat, he's been willing to go out and and meet with these individuals and and show them the trees and and look at all the things that you saw in the pictures uh tonight. So and then just lastly, I would just say that if we are gonna take that approach um of, you know, forming a group and then, you know, going through designed, you know, we'll call it, you know, redesigned feasibility. Um whether it's in kind or, you know, talking about some of these other ideas, we probably wanna figure out what that's gonna cost from our consultants. Um, cause that's something that may have to be approved by this board, you know, depending where we are in the current process and and project.
Understood. Okay. Guys, thank you very much. We've been at it for two hours. We're gonna be coming back to this at a Board of Commissioners meeting. So everybody will have a chance to have their say again. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Good night.